I lost my very important sign. Are we filming? Oh gosh, I apologise public for that. Okay, right, back down to business. Good morning, I am councillor Jane Dunn and I am chairing today's meeting. I will get everyone to introduce themselves and then you can introduce yourselves and then we've got a little bit of procedure to go through, okay? So...
Good morning councillor Vicky Priestley.
Good morning councillor David Barker.
Good morning everyone, my name is Jane Gough from Licensing and I'll be reading the report this morning.
Good morning Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the subcommittee.
Morning, I'm John Turner from Democratic Services here to record today's proceedings.
Okay, and if you look at your microphone then you can introduce yourselves, we'll get those out of the way and then we can crack on with the hearing. Okay, I'll go to the lady.
Wrong side. Sorry, wrong paddle.
Good morning, I'm Michelle Hazlewood from John Gorton Partners here to represent the applicant.
Good morning Zahid Hassan from Leeds Food Limited, representative of Chinese Sheffield. Thank you.
Good morning Marion Gerson, representing the local tenants.
I can confirm the gentleman is the landlord of the premises and he's just here to support the applicant.
Okay, he's just going to get your microphone working so we don't have that again. Oh, it's okay now. Could you just turn that off? I know, you think after two years we'd be used to this, wouldn't you? Right, okay. Thank you very much and welcome to committee on a quite an autumnal Monday morning but quite beautiful. So I'm going to hand over to our legal adviser to run through the procedure, okay? And then we'll go straight ahead, thank you Sam.
Thank you Chair, I think we're all quite spread out this morning, aren't we? We need about 10 pairs of eyes. Has everyone got a copy of the papers that need? Some of you got a copy of the report pack and the extra stuff that was sent on Friday? Yeah, lovely. So the procedure is just right at the back of the pack on page 40, which I'll just run through very briefly. So the Licensing Officer Jane this morning will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, that's a time to raise them, so if there's anything that seems to be missing or inaccurate, we'll get that amended for the record. We've no responsible authorities present this morning and none have objected, so we'll head over to Marion first of all to detail their relevant representation, so just to go through what was in the report that you wrote in and anything else you want to add here this morning. Members may have some questions for you and with the leave of the Chair, the applicants might ask you questions as well. We'll then head over to the applicant and their representative to detail the application, provide clarification on the application and respond to representations made both in the report itself and here in today. Again, members will have an opportunity for questions of the applicant and with the leave of the Chair, the interested party, Marion, will have an opportunity for questions as well. We'll then give the applicant the opportunity to sum up the application and we'll take the options from Jane as detailed in the report. There'll then be a private session for members to take legal advice and consider the application. The decision of the committee this morning will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made their runda. At any time during the hearing this morning, members can request legal advice, which will either be an open session as we are now or in private where we'll probably just nip out, have a chat and come back in and feedback what that legal advice was. And it is classed as a public hearing this morning, so we are being live webcast. Again, that's why it's quite helpful with the microphones because it focuses the camera on you to enable the webcasting to run seamlessly. So we'll probably forget at some point, but if we do remind you, don't worry about it, it's just to help things run as it does. So hopefully that's relatively straightforward and I'll stop waffling now and then hand over to Jane, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So any questions, feel free to ask, you know, and everything. So I'm going to hand over to Jane now, who's going to introduce the report and then it will be Marion, if I hope it's okay to use your Christian name, Marion, thank you. We'll then be able to make her points and then we'll hand over to yourselves and members will ask questions and we'll go ahead like that. But everybody will get their chance to speak and to be considered, okay? So quite free, but we just need a little bit of protocol at the beginning. Okay, I'll hand over to you please Jane.
Thank you Jane. Good morning everyone, thank you for coming this morning for the consideration of the grant application for Oodles 217 219 London Road premises licence for late night refreshment. The applicants to this premises are Leeds Food Limited and the Licensing Service received the application on the 29th of July, which is in Appendix A of your packs. Throughout this consultation period, the applicants have confirmed that the premises licence is to facilitate late night refreshment indoors and outdoors, so for indoor and outdoor provision, which basically means for consumption within the premises as well as on a takeaway and delivery basis. It is noted for the record that there have been no comments or agreed conditions submitted by any of the responsible authorities in regards to this application. So the reason for referral this morning is that there's been an unresolved representation from a member of the public, a local resident. Applicant and objectors have been, sorry, I'll start that again. The local resident has been advised of updated information and a pack of information circulated from the solicitor prior to the hearing. Obviously, that's not made any difference to the outcome of the objection, which is why we are here today. So I'm just going to scoot through the report if you don't mind and I'll go down to section eight, which is appeals. So the Licensing Act 2003, section 181, schedule five makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against the decisions of the Licensing Authority to the Magistrates Court. So the recommendations today Chair are that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps as the subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Thank you Jane. Okay, we're going to hand over to you now Marion to state your case, if you want to press your button, okay? Take your time.
I don't live directly opposite or close to these premises, but I work with a food bank, the Netheridge and Charu Food Bank, which is about 100 yards from this place. And consequently, I know both the people who I work with as the team that run the food bank, some of who live very close to these premises, and also a lot of our clients who come and visit us. And they are a great mixture. It's mostly run for people who need halal food, but we have people from all sorts of backgrounds who come. Some of them live directly opposite this place. I notice in the report that was sent to me that it says that nobody lives directly opposite, but that's incorrect. On the second and third floors, well first, second and third floors of some of the shops, there are flats, many of which have multi-generational families in them. I also used to live just off Ecclesall Road and we had a lot of trouble with one particular premise that wanted to open, as these people do, to be able to have deliveries from, into the early hours of the morning. And that used to cause noise, not just for the people who lived directly opposite, but up the streets on either side as the noise would travel up. Late at night, the problem is car doors slamming, engines revving or idling outside the shop. And so these are noises which, late at night, when there's very little other traffic, make a significant intrusion into people's sleep patterns, both for people who are having to go off to work in the morning and for children who need to go to school and be able to concentrate. So just as when I lived on Ecclesall Road, when we had quite a lot of people who had the knowledge and the skills of how to object to applications like this, I believe the same thing should be true for the much poorer area and the people who live on London Road, on Woodhead Road, on Cursely Road, on Charu Lane, all of which are within hearing distance of these premises. Either at the front where the vehicles will be coming and going, if it's successful there'll be quite a lot of that, and at the rear where there is the extraction fans. So I want to object to this, I don't object to the premises themselves, I came past it this morning, it looks lovely. The people who've set it up have really made a nice, a nice and inviting shop out of it, as I wish them very well. But to continue to trade from, up until three o'clock in the morning is just not acceptable in what is a residential area as well as a shopping and entertainment area. It's not a city centre, it should not be treated like this area around here, this city centre where late night operation is expected. It isn't that, and so I would like to express my objection on behalf of all of the residents locally to this, to this application for late night. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask, do you have a petition then, that, because you said you were speaking on behalf of all the residents? Did you collect a petition of signatures? Or is it just, I mean, I'm not disputing it by the way, it's just anecdotal because you did just end with all the residents, so...
No, no, I don't have a petition.
Right, thank you Marion. If we could hand over to, sorry, I wrote your name down, decided I've got it incorrect. Is it Michelle? Thank you Michelle, yeah, thank you.
Do any of your councillors have any other questions?
Didn't want to jump the queue.
Moment, no? Vicky?
No Chair.
David?
Just a couple of very quick ones. Are you aware of any issues in the area at the moment with businesses operating late into the night causing problems for the people that you know?
I believe there is one, yes, that is causing difficulties. But I can't be more specific than that.
And could you just help me out, just give me an impression of how many people have actually come to you and sort of said that this is going to disturb them, that they're unhappy about this development?
Certainly one of the people who works in the food bank, who lives just behind these premises, and there have been, we don't have much time to talk to people as they come, as clients, but I have talked to some of them and made them aware, because of course they weren't aware that this was going to be happening. They have no means of finding out these things unless people like me tell them. And who, and so I probably have spoken to four, probably four different people who were quite alarmed at this.
Thank you, that's really helpful, thanks Jane.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Sam, have you got anything? Yeah, okay. Sorry about that, thank you.
I only have one question really, and that is, you have not personally experienced any issues from Oodles Chinese or properties on London Road?
Oodles Chinese haven't been operating late at night, so nobody has experienced these issues yet.
Thank you. Okay? David? No, okay. So we can now hand over to the applicant to put their case.
Good morning, thank you, and thank you for the water as well. I'll try not to splutter as I go through. This is an application, as you've heard, for a new premises licence, it's on very limited terms, it's only to late night refreshment, there's no request for alcohol to be included and therefore it triggers from 2300 hours running through to 0300 and is for both consumption on the premises and off the premises by way of takeaway or delivery services. To try and illustrate, because it is a very new venue and London Road is constantly changing in its content and format, I put together a little bundle, it is mainly photographs and information about the operator, try and give you a feel of who Oodles are and the style of the premises and where it's located. So hopefully that will assist, I might refer back to that as we're going along, but it's there for illustration, as they say, a picture is better than a thousand words and it saves me having to try to describe where it is along London Road and what it looks like. So three points really to the application, the type of the operation, the applicant and the concerns of the objector. So the application is by Leeds Food Limited and it is Oodles Chinese, it's a fast restaurant food operation with takeaway element. Oodles started way back in 2010 in Leicester and since then have grown to now nearly 40 sites, Sheffield being one of the latest. It was started by a family who decided to fuse the Indo-Chinese offer and to make sure that there was a visible kitchen so people could see the food being prepared and know it was fresh and also have that sensory experience of observing the food and smelling the food as it was being made. Since then, to try and achieve expansion, they've moved to a franchise operation as well, and my client Zahid is one of their franchisees. That means he has to work very closely to the Oodle brand because they're very keen to expand, they have a mission of achieving 100 sites in the next couple of years, and so he has very clear direction about his signage, his food and how his premises operate. And there are other Oodles Chinese's operating successfully with late night refreshment premises licences over the country. The Sheffield branch was chosen on London Road for various reasons, because it has the good hinterland of the students, it has the good hinterland of a very mixed cultural base and is also very accessible, being one of the main fur affairs in and out of the city. The site was the former Thai restaurant, which if you have driven up there in recent times was looking particularly tired and is owned by the landlord who I have with me. He was approached by Zahid and they entered into an agreement to convert it to a noodles. The development costs of transforming the building have cost just shy of £300,000. One of the critical things, as well as the lovely kitchen and decor, is that as part of that fit out, all new acoustic panels were placed into the roof. So the one resident, we do know is in the area, another tenant of the landlord is above a Oodles restaurant, but their acoustic protection is now better than it was when it was a Thai restaurant and as a result of the works which has been undertaken. And the landlord and Zahid are in touch with those people who live immediately above and they've experienced no concerns and they're aware of the three o'clock application being made. Few of the other reasons for looking at this London Road site was to address some of the points raised by Mrs Gerson. Clearly, late night deliveries are now undertaken by Uber Eats, Deliveroo, Just Eat, it is a phenomenon which has grown in the last five years on epic proportions. But those companies, to be able to contract with them now do require certain standards and require levels of accessibility. So within the premises itself, it's designed so that you and I walking in the door go to a different point to collect food to the Uber Eats and the Deliveroo people, and they also have a special table in a designated place for them to put their bags, make sure it's packed etc. And that was in Zahid's mind when he was looking at the space of the shop, because he knows that the thing he doesn't want is cars being left running outside, he wants the drivers in, out very quickly, he doesn't want them to feel the need to horns or anything like that to grab his attention. So the system in place within the premises facilitates the provision of the Deliveroo facility, for want of a better description. Zahid is also really experienced in this. In his former life before coming to Sheffield, he ran one of the massive Domino's takeaway franchises in Leeds, in Headingly, which is student city of Leeds. It was huge, massive numbers of people making the pizzas, but equally huge amounts of drivers. And he was telling me how, at one point in freshers week when he was there, he had to manage approximately 65 drivers arriving within the period of one hour to collect and takeaway deliveries. In order to do that, he executed a marshalling system, gave them tags and so that everybody knew who was getting what food and put in those processors. Now, we don't expect that for London Road, we don't expect anything like that for London Road, but when he looked at it, he saw that to the front of the premises, there is designated parking, he assessed the use of that parking area and the photos I took and put into the bundle I did on a lunchtime and they weren't all full, I was very easily enabled to pull into them. But on a night, those spaces are readily available. So he can marshal the arrival of delivery drivers, whether they be on mopeds, vehicles, pushbikes, and he's got his order, his queue. And what he also told me, and I didn't actually know this, but there is now huge control between the people who contract with Uber Eats and Deliveroo over the drivers. So he was explaining to me how he's already had an incident with a driver of a company, I can't remember which one, we'll probably not name them. When this individual kept arriving to take the noodles, which cooled very quickly, in an unheated bag, they'd not preheated the bag, which is one of the requirements under the contract. Zahid refused to pass over the food because that wasn't as per the contract and that wasn't going to get it to the customer in the format it should be. So he was happy to ring the customer and say, no, you'll have to wait and we'll re-cook your food to make sure the customer gets it right. And he wasn't happy for the driver to take shortcuts and he explained to me how if a driver defaults in any way on various occasions, then they have an ability to report into the delivery companies and have those drivers blocked from actually frequenting their sites. And he is not afraid to do it, he's already implemented it with this one individual since July because it wasn't to the standard. So issues of cars left running, horns being tutored, doors being slammed unnecessarily will be addressed rigorously because that's how he's done it in the past and that's how he's already started doing it in Sheffield. So massive trust in this young man's ability, he's already proved he can do it both in Leeds and in Sheffield and he believes in the community in which he's operating. As a result of opening, they've recruited people who they know, but they're also recruited people from the local community so that they understand the community more. And once the three o'clock licence is granted, if you agree to it today, then they will recruit another six employees because they'll need that for the night time focus. There is the overflow car parks at the back of London Road where drivers or individuals could park to pick up food, they're not anticipating that that will be needed, which comes to the very critical question of what residents are immediately adjacent to and across the road from the premises, as they are the ones who are potentially going to be impacted by the late night noise. So within the bundle, there are some photos, I am no photographer and they were all just done on my iPhone, but they illustrate the most proximate premises. So to the left of the premises, there is a shop.
Sorry Marion, can we just make sure we're talking about that page? Okay, yeah, can we make?
Absolutely. It has the word Enet above it. So this is the shop owned by the landlord, which he trades, and there is no accommodation above that premises. To the far end is the post office which wraps around the corner and as far as we're aware, there's no accommodation above that. So either side, immediately either side, further down from that, I think there's stairs, beers, who the landlord knows very well and they've not raised any concerns with the application. Then below that photo, you've got a shot up the road looking at the other side with amigos etc. Now, we're fortunate in one respect because the landlord also owns a number of premises along London Road, including these. And he can give you direct evidence if you require, but I am advised that beneath, those units are all retail or cafe restaurant on the ground floor. And above, as you can see, the first one is Ultimate, that's sort of a healthcare type thing, and then there's commercial offices above the remainder. So our knowledge of the immediate space, both in front and to the side and in front of the property, is that it is all commercial, whether that be retail or offices. And the landlord's here, he knows inch by inch, he can confirm that to you, but that's our understanding. Yes, to the rear of the premises, there is residential accommodation, but we wouldn't expect those persons to be impacted by traffic, particularly of the delivering age, which I think is the thing which most peoples are worried about, because of the frequency and number of vehicles that can potentially attend. And then going to, sorry, that's the very back page. The page before, you've got the long A4 photo and that illustrates the designated parking area and you can see the length of it there, which is readily available. So we're not seeing a fast food operation of this nature operating to three o'clock at night will not cause any noise, there will be a level of traffic. Will that be more than what is already on London Road? Will that be materially different to some of the other operations on London Road and the traffic that they're bringing and it being one of the R2O roads into the city centre? It may have a marginal increase, but what we can say is, by the way that the building itself's being planned, the choice of the location and the systems which Zahid's putting in place, that will be very, very tightly managed and the risk of public nuisance is negligible. And if there are issues, Zahid will address them very, very quickly, as he's already done, in relation to something arguably here today as small as the warmth of the storage bag, he will be proactive. I think that that answers the key points which Mrs Gerson's raised. You are very familiar with the strong arm approach that Jonathan Round and Bob Singh approached to environmental health issues. If either of those individuals thought there was a risk of public nuisance arising from this operation, they would have filed a representation and made it quite clear as to whether they wanted curbs, additional conditions. They have not, they know London Road very well, they know the sound levels and the soundscape of it and particularly the background noise. The police have not raised any issues either. You can see from the quality of the layout that this is going to be very good indeed and it also has the second safety net of being a franchise, so they're being internally pleased by the owners of Oodles Chinese. The landlord knows his area well and he has been happy to go with this. He rents his properties out far and wide on London Road, he would not want to alienate his other tenants by bringing in something which is going to be a problem, but he's very comfortable with that and he's worked very closely with Zahid, so he understands London Road and how it operates and works. So our view is that with the very clear systems in place, the contractual obligations... So our view is that with the very clear systems in place, the contractual obligations between landlord and tenant, tenant and Oodles as a big company, and then the Deliveroo, Uber Eats structures, the good choice of the location in this respect and the practical experience of the applicant before you, that this application will not impact on the four licensing objectives. And we appreciate Mrs. Gerson's concern. And it's lovely actually to hear people being concerned about other people. I think something perhaps we've all learnt through the pandemic is a little bit of kindness goes a long way. But we have in licensing to see a material risk. And in this instance, I would humbly put forward that there's no material risk of the concerns that she's exhibiting. And maybe this is one of those little steps on London Road, another good operator coming in, brightening it up, making it more attractive, will start to help lift that area. So that there's the collective benefit from more employment, a nicer space coming through for everyone who's there. And that's our application, we're open to questions, I have the applicant, I have the landlord, they have much more intimate detail, especially about noodles.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. Mr. Hussain, would you like to say anything or ask any, yeah?
I believe she explained everything very well, so if you need to ask any question, I'm willing to answer.
Okay. I'm just making sure, before we move on to members' questions, I wanted to give you the opportunity. And Marion, you will be invited in to ask questions, I'm going to give the members the opportunity first. Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask, how many members of staff have you got at the moment? And how many more, if you get the licence, you're going to employ?
So currently, we have twelve employees working. So if we open till three o'clock, we need at least six to eight more people to cover seven days' shifts.
Could I just ask, are they all part-time staff?
So basically, if we open till three o'clock, so we make shift from five to three or six to three, it's kind of full-time jobs, it's not part-time.
If I can just build on what Vicky's just asked. You mentioned the jobs, they won't be, do you know, they'll be part, did you say part-time or full-time? Could you tell me, will they have proper contracts, they're not zero contract hours, they will have full working terms and conditions?
So currently, we are following zero hour contract. So I'm not sure we are able to give fixed hours or not. But most of our staff getting forty hours average on zero hour contract, so.
Okay, I'm well aware we're not here to debate that, but it's just important, that's an important point.
I've just got a couple of things I was going to ask about your client's background, but you've covered that, so it's foreshortened my question in. The first, simple one, why three o'clock in the morning? What's the demand for noodles at three o'clock in the morning?
Students. And when you think about the cohort of Chinese students, particularly in that area, that's a massive Chinese population at the bottom of London Road now, tying in with the Chinatown development. So that's, and I think noodles and things like that. My daughter's seventeen, she went to look at Liverpool University yesterday, did she buy a burger? No, she bought a box of noodles. I think it's the thing at the moment perceived. But you have demand, you're told, but there was demand for other venues, other franchise operators for the late night operation.
Thank you. And just a second one. You mentioned that, you know, if there are issues, you're prepared to take action and do things about that. I think the reason Mrs. Gerson's here today is that you've got a community that don't actually feel that empowered and are unlikely to raise their concerns directly. I just wonder how you would get the information that problems were being caused, so that you could act on that?
I think my client's fortunate in two regards. One is he's got a landlord who's well-versed in Sheffield and as he's here to the ground. So he's very familiar with lots of the people who live in the area and lots of cultural ties to them. But secondly, as Zahid said to me, if a driver is prepared to toot outside the shop, then I can assume he's going to toot his horn outside somebody's house. I'm not going to let that happen either way. If a driver is prepared to drop food and just take a photo of it and walk away and not know somebody's picked it up, he's the guy who's going to leave his car running because he's in a rush and I'm not prepared to have that. So he's already tuned in to the delivery market to such an extent that he can, he's aware of traits which would cause that person to become a potential nuisance creator. You said there was a gentleman who came in, a delivery driver, another one who was quite insistent on always being the first person to get the delivery, so he was out of the door faster and became quite aggressive with his staff. He's already, he's blocked that guy as well. So I'm hoping we get to a point where we have some delivery drivers available. But he won't, you know, can you confirm that?
Basically, delivery drivers, sometimes they are very tricky, so it's hard to handle. So we just give them warning, you need to stay in the manners when you walk inside the shop because other customers inside the shop and our staff as well. If they are not following the protocol, so we just send them email Uber Eats, Deliveroo, following drivers, not more required to our store. So they never come again. So it's very straightforward procedure now. Before, it was very hard, Uber don't listen to us. Now, they start doing this, if we send them email, this driver name, this is driver ID, we don't need him anymore, so he's stopped from our restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you, I have a question. My own son went to university and lived in Headingly. And as we know, unlike Sheffield, Headingly has a very, very like closed mile of constant student accommodation, where you don't really get a lot of ordinary residents living in there, so it's slightly different. However, you have explained quite like that. I can understand the concerns of the community because we all know what can happen when students get a little bit giddy and, you know, the volume control seems to disappear, I think we've all been in that situation. And also with your business model, students aren't here twelve months of the year. I run a business that has a lot of students in it and I see massive dips. So I'm kind of wondering, like councillor Barker, three P M. And you did mention as well that it was about the Chinese population, do you know, a lot of Chinese students? I also have a lot of Chinese students in my business, which is not, it's a beauty salon by the way, nothing to do with licensing. And they don't really go out that late, so it will be a different market. So I was just wondering, again, if you could just explain how you have come to the conclusion that three P M is definitely necessary? And that you know, because I'm going to question slightly on that, so.
They've looked at the demographic and the sales which have gone through other Oodles Chinese. And it supports those hours on a commercial and economic basis. It is a new venture, they started in July. They believe that three o'clock is appropriate for the commercial viability of the business and that there's the turnover there to be secured. But if a licence is granted to three o'clock, if in February, it's very cold and wet and we are in a cost of living crisis and everybody pulls in their belt, then they may not be able to operate till three o'clock, it may not be financially viable. But I think the question today is, would this premises impact on the four licensing objectives? So if open at one, two or three, is there a material risk of public nuisance arising? And our evidence is that there's not. Whether they always trade till three o'clock on a wet February midweek night is another question. But if they were able to operate till three o'clock any night of the week, at any point in the year, would it cause a nuisance? And our view is no.
Could I also ask, how are your staff getting home that late as well from a safety point of view?
So most of our staff living around the shops, ten minutes walk, five minutes walk, nobody come to, apart from myself and my missus, we came by car. And most of our staff coming by buses or by walk or we drop them home even when we close eleven o'clock right now. It's not very far from the shop, they are locals.
Okay, so you don't have a policy in place about how you get your staff home safely? Because, you know, I was just curious, that's all.
I don't see any policies in place in Domino's, I've worked seven years there, multinational companies, they don't have any policy. We left four o'clock in the night, clock out and go home. So to be honest, I have no idea any.
I think, as you've already heard, Zahid is caring for his employees, he gives them lifts home. He knows where they live, that they're only five, ten minutes walk away or one bus ride. And I think that also confirms, so what he sought to do is recruit from the immediate hinterland of the premises. So he starts to integrate into the local community, understand the local community. If everybody arrived in a car and went home, there'd be more noise traffic. If everybody was going home to different parts of the city, he wouldn't have his ears on the ground to find out how his business is operated in the place that it's located. So there's always negatives and there is danger out there, as we've seen so horribly in recent, well, this weekend in Sheffield. But the walk and the locations are fairly close from what you're saying, five minutes, ten minutes walk? And you've given lifts home even at eleven o'clock to people who work, yeah? I hope that answers the question.
Just a couple. You said there was, operated under the franchises, clear codes and practices that they had to work to. I wondered if you could just share a little bit more on that, please?
So they have to all work to the same menus, food preparation standards, basic food hygiene standards and the sort of branding and also reporting in in relation to what, tickets, et cetera. But they're given a pack, which I didn't add to the bundle, but I have a copy of it from Oodles about how to operate. And then they've got more details as to what you have to do in relation. It is very much more around food, food hygiene, food delivery and quality of food. But it's also about the standards of the brand and how they are perceived and what it looks like. Similar to what McDonald's do, you know, you have to wear the right clothes, et cetera, et cetera. It provides a corporate entity and a framework. And, you know, the big risk for these guys is they've invested a huge amount of money, they took a lease. They don't want to lose the franchise, so they must operate that franchise correctly because of the massive capital investment they've undertaken.
Thank you. And just finally, how many internal covers are there?
We're going for twenty-five.
Thank you, that's all for me, thanks.
Marion, would you like to ask anything?
Yes, please. I think you said that the landlord of these premises also owns all the shops and all the buildings on the, on London Road opposite. And consequently, either knows who is working there or knows who lives there. Is that correct?
He's here and can answer that question himself, but pretty much you earn. So if you want to just explain.
Sorry, let me correct this, I don't own or hold it London Road. I own four or five premises, just two on my opposite, which is the, used to be Nat West Bank on the corner. And then the premises next door to that, they are currently let. And then other two premises, which is the computer shop, which I occupy, and then the Oodles.
And you've operated the computer shop for a long time?
I've been at the computer shop for the last seventeen years.
And you're familiar with who's directly opposite the computer shop?
Yes, I do, yeah. Above the Omegas, there's an office, our client is commercial. Next door to Omegas is currently premises empty, but there used to be living accommodation. I think it's, they're linked for the last seven or eight months now. And other than that, there's a hair salon, which has been operating for a lot longer than us, next door to that. And there's nobody living upstairs. And then you get to the next door to that is dentists, which they operate the whole building, there's not living accommodation upstairs.
Have you anything else, Marion?
What I've been hearing is that this is going to be, hopefully, a very well-run restaurant. And I really wish them well because London Road, the whole of London Road, Abbey Del Road, needs good businesses. And if they're going to be employing local people, that's also a benefit. But I still question the need for them to be open until three o'clock in the morning. With the disturbance, because I know, having lived near Ecclesall Road, but now also Abbey Del Road further up, that it isn't just the people directly opposite who suffer. Because cars, scooters and so on will be travelling up Sherrillane, along the other roads in the area. And as I've said before, although these are roads which get a lot of traffic during the day, the impact is much greater at night when otherwise it's quiet. And sleep is disturbed much more by sudden noises like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Jane, I just have one, thank you. You mentioned that you were a previous manager of Domino's at a previous place. How late did they operate when you were managing there?
But in what sense, like handling the drivers, handing the staff for late night shifts?
Yeah, just the busy, when you were open with delivery and all that sort of thing, what time did you stop serving?
So Headingly, twenty-four hours. We close only six to seven to cleaning the shop and we start again eight o'clock. So it's quite busy store, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Right, if we want, no more questions? Is there anything you would like to ask before?
There's one thing I forgot to mention, children. So we didn't draft and lodge the application. And when I was going through it, they've tendered the children's conditions, saying no children on the premises. So if you were interpreting that as to when licensable activities are undertaken, I think that's quite fine because that would be from eleven o'clock. But the hours of operation of the premises licence, because they put their opening hours on, are actually something like eleven in the morning through. So on the basis of that condition, arguably, no children can go on this premises. Now, personally, having been to the site and smelt the food, I was quite devastated when I realised that because it is somewhere where I could nip down to the office with my two after work. So subject to your determination, if you are inclined to grant, I wondered whether you would consider moderating that condition to no unaccompanied children, which I think would then provide the safeguarding safety net. But I think this is because they, when they were drafting it, in their minds, they were only thinking about post twenty-three hundred hours. But it actually would stifle their earlier business potentially quite significantly. Now, London Road is an interesting location at times and I don't think people would want six and seven-year-olds going in there at any time on their own. But unaccompanied, I think, would support the child safeguarding licensing objective and would cure a well-intended condition, which was tendered, but not following through the full implications of what they'd actually said. So it was just to mention that, if possible.
Has that opened up any more questions from anyone? No, okay, so we need to sum up. Okay, I can go to the options available. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, please, yeah. Yes, please, yeah.
Sorry, if there's anything final that you'd just like to add in summing off before we close off?
I don't know whether the committee has the option to do this, but I would, I would really, it sounds to me as if you're likely to grant this licence, but I would really ask you to consider granting it until one o'clock in the morning, not until three o'clock, because those extra two hours in order to serve a few students is not worth the potential amount of disturbance to the people who live round there. Thank you.
Anything else you wish to add after your final name, please?
I've put in the written submission, to the rear of the written submission, I've recited various parts of the guidance and the paragraphs. I'm sure you're very familiar with the paragraphs, because every licensing lawyer takes you to the most hearings. Critical points in relation to this application, I think, of that we have had no adverse comment at all from environmental health. As I said earlier in my submissions, both Jonathan and Bob Singh are really keen, they do look to protect the immunity of the residents of Sheffield. And the fact that they do not see an issue in relation to this application, I think is of fundamental importance, because they've put an objective eye on to this and its potential impacts in relation to public nuisance and noise. The location has been very well chosen, the residential object was confirmed that she doesn't live in the area, her concerns have almost been put to the residents of the area. There is a good network of communication with my client, and particularly his landlord, into the immediate community, and they've not had adverse feedback. And indeed, the most proximate property where somebody lives above the restaurant, their life's been enhanced by virtue of the works which have been undertaken. So they're in a better place than they were before Oodles came to London Road. So my view is that what we have with the three conditions tendered, the clear direction to drivers, presence of CCTV, those conditions are appropriate and proportionate. To add more conditions would then take you into questions of are they necessary? Is it a disproportionate burden? How can they be justified? But beneath all that, there's a critical question, is this site going to cause public nuisance? If it operates at 11 o'clock as it is doing now, with no record of complaints, with no public nuisance, if it moves to 12, 1, 2, 3, would the mode of operation proposed and the way that they're going to do it cause public nuisance? And I think that the hour of work of the premises is almost immaterial. If they're not causing a nuisance at one, excuse me, they'll not cause a nuisance at three, and there's no evidence of nuisance. And therefore, there's nothing to prohibit this application being granted. Thank you. Thank you.
Jane? Thank you, Chair. So straight to the options for this morning. So the options open to the committee are to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions, or to reject the whole or part of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Will, have you anything you wish to add, Sam? No? Okay, we'll ask you to leave while we actually discuss, okay? And then we were brought back in to give you the outcome, okay? Thank you. And. Follow, John. Yeah. If you want to take your bags with you, please, and make sure you don't leave anything behind. Yeah, thank you. This thing's subcommittee has made a decision, and we have made a decision to grant with the one condition that there's no unaccompanied children between 11 and 3pm. 11am, sorry. 11pm and 3am in the morning. As you can tell, I don't, I'm like Cinderella, I'm always in bed before 12 o'clock. So those hours don't exist to me anymore. But anyway, so that is the decision of the subcommittee. And I will hand over, you will receive all this in writing, but I'll hand over to, who's going to sum that up? Is that you, Sam? Please, yeah. Can I just add, just to reassure, we know Mrs. Gerson's not come back, we've been looking for her. But just to reassure anyone who's watching and said that Marion can see it later, that if there is any breaks in, you know, noise nuisance, everything, that they can report this to, directly to the licensing committee and hopefully speak to you as owners as well. And we will take, you know, we do take this seriously, as I know that the applicant has actually reinforced that. But we as a licensing subcommittee do take breaches of noise nuisance, et cetera, extremely seriously. So I just want to reassure the community over that, because it's great that the community is so involved and I wish you success with your venture. Okay, Sam, if you'd like to sum.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to reiterate, so obviously it is granted as applied for with the conditions tendered, just with that one in relation to children that'll operate while the premises are open for late night refreshment. And as the Chair said, just because it's granted, it doesn't mean it's granted forever. So there are provisions in place, should there be evidence received that the premises are undermining one or more of the licensing objectives, then the premises licence can be looked into and potentially reviewed, which is more a matter for Mrs. Gerson if she is watching this back. But like Chair said, you will receive a notice in writing, and Marion will have the right of appeal against her decision to grant the licence, which will be set out in writing too. And I think it might be worth just dropping her an email as well, just to confirm all of this, but for your purposes, you're good to go. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, and take care. Keep warm. It used to be stay safe, it's now keep warm. I am, right. Item six. Yes. Okay, Jane, if you could just announce that, please?
Sorry, folks. In terms of the 11 o'clock case, which was due to be Dodona, which was formerly Otto's Restaurant on Sherrville Road, the variation application has now been withdrawn from committee as the health and safety team have agreed a new plan and five further conditions, so there was no need for the hearing this morning. So that licence has now been granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, that concludes today's meeting of the subcommittee. Thank you, everyone, and have a good week.